All rise.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday evening, April 11th, 2022. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have 23 items on the evening's agenda, and I will ask the clerk to please read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council meeting, March 28th, 2022.
Counselor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion is made in second to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed? The minutes are filed 11-0. Agenda item number two.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition for Massachusetts Electric to relocate and install a new pole to remove a tree guy on Amory Road. Order number 22-100, 8554.
Okay, this is a public hearing. It'll be taken up in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, then questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the City Council. So we'll start with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah. Al Galvin, design engineer, National Grid, Hope Dell Office.
Just give a little overview of what they want to do with the pole and the removal.
Yes, they're looking to get rid of a tree guy. It's an initiative National Grid has. Over time, the trees give way, and it causes instability to the lines. So in this case, they're taking that out, but to add support, they're going to relocate that Pole Four that's there now, which is basically right in front of the house by their walkway, 30 feet south, get it out of the way a little bit, add an intermediate pole along the road to cut down the span of the street line that's there, and have a nice straight run with no guy wires in the way and things like that.
Anything else, Al?
That's it? No, I think that covers it.
Okay. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Yep, come on up, and you can actually use the microphone right over here.
My name is Michael Hansen. I'm the owner of the property where the pole is at. The stump is completely rotted. There's two guy wires going into this stump. It's a safety hazard. I just really want something to happen before a resolution, before there's really bad problem.
And this, I assume National Grid will get right on this once it's approved?
Yes, the, I assume the second one's Verizon, so that, you know, they'd have to go about the pole removal and the guy removal at their scheduled date, but yeah, National Grid will take care of the pole and their wire immediately.
Okay. Anything else, Mike?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you so much.
Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Members of the public speaking in favor? Member of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that part of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public? Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the City Council. Counselor Orem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question. I walk this street quite often. In fact, I saw our council president today around the corner from there. Curious, is this where the new house is being built? Were they just put in the foundation or is it further?
They may know better than me.
Yeah.
Yes, status quo.
That's what I thought. That house is going up quite quick, too. But, uh, but thank you. I thought it was there, but I appreciate acknowledging that, just so I'm aware where it is, and thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Are any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Counselor Landers.
Just a quick comment, Mr. President, for your benefit over there. It's in public services. We will schedule a meeting soon.
The mic's on?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll get working on it right away.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Landers. Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and it is in public service, and they'll take that up rather quickly, so. Al, thank you very much.
All right, great, thank you.
Agenda item number three.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the petition of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, DBA AT&amp;T, for a grant of location for one small cell wireless facility to be located on an existing pole within the public right-of-way in the vicinity of 241 Forest Street. Order number 22-100, 8558. And in addition, we have a tolling agreement between New Singular Wireless and the City of Marlborough to extend time limitations to June 8th for the approval of the small cell wireless facility.
Okay, this public hearing, we take it in four stages, again with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the City Councilors. So we'll open the public hearing. And the councilors, we've been informed by the applicant, they have asked for a continuance of the public hearing till April 25th, so I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until April 25th. Anyone want to make that motion? Counselor Landers.
Yes, Mr. President. I'll make that motion that we continue the public hearing to April 25th.
Motion made in second to continue the public hearing until April 25th. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed? It is approved, 11-0, to continue the public hearing to April 25th. Counselor Landers.
That being the case, Mr. President, what I'd like a vote tonight, that we extend the time limit to June 28th. Remember, we want to be very conscious of the deadlines on these matters, so what I'm hoping that, you know, we have the meeting on the 25th of April, but then we extend the time limit to June 28th, and so if we have that vote, that would...
So the council is asking for suspension of the rules to take in the tolling agreement to extend the time limit to approve the permit to June 28th. So on a motion for the suspension of the rules, all those in favor? Opposed, the suspension is approved. So you want to make a motion to approve the tolling agreement?
Yes, the motion would to approve the tolling agreement, and the final vote would be on June 28th.
Motion made in second to approve the tolling agreement to June 28th. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Perlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to confirm, on the agenda, it says the 8th, but the tolling agreement says the 28th, so just confirming that it's the 28th and that's just a typo?
No, no, the original one was based on the public hearing being conducted tonight, so when they talked to Karen, Karen asked them if they would revise it to push it out a couple more weeks to line up with our meeting schedule, because we're extending the public hearing, so that we, when we start our work after the public hearing, we'll have until the 28th to act on it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other discussion on the motion to approve the tolling agreement to June 28th? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the tolling agreement is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number four.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for modification of special permit from 587 Bolton Street, Inc., to allow for outdoor seating, a gazebo and bar area at 587 Bolton Street. Order number 22-100, 8542.
Again, as with the last public hearings, this one will be taken up in four stages with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the City Councilors. So we'll open up with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm with my wife Sharon, and I'm John Stonaris, 19 Westgate Road in Framingham, and we own Bolton Street Tavern, right down the street here. And we're looking for, it's an amendment to the special permit, I believe they call it, and that would encompass allowing us to put a outside gazebo that would have a bar, and I think the amendment is, I believe, is to amend the one that, where we got the alcohol to be served on the deck when we first opened. Modification, excuse me. I should do a speaking. So we have a beautiful property there, right on the water, and what we're trying to do, and COVID really was the initiator of this. When we put the tent out there, it increased business quite a bit, from basically down 95% to having some business. So what we're liking, what we're looking to do is take that concept and take it to a bigger level. We have three, almost three and a half acres. We have a lot of parking there, and we've done quite a bit of work to the building itself, renovated the whole inside, two months before COVID started, well, the lockdown started. So what we're really looking to do is take full advantage of the property, and we're not overusing it, but pretty much on a seasonal basis, and we're trying to use it for business purposes. There's a lot of demand. We do a lot of functions, but I think we can do even more, and I think, especially with COVID, especially with what's gone on the last couple of years, it's a no-brainer as far as usage.
Y'all set? Okay, all right, thank you, John. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any members of the public have questions? Any questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the City Councilors? Councilors, Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Overall, I think this is a great idea for you folks, and I wish you the best in getting it going. So how many seating would be available out there when it's all said and done? Any idea?
Just double-checking the application. We have 105.
Outside?
Outside.
Okay, that's a good size. And when do you expect it to be opening? Sometime, is it going to be this fall, this summer, or is it going to be, take longer than that?
We're trying to do it this spring.
Okay.
Trying to build it this spring.
Okay.
Take full advantage of the summer and the good weather.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Any other members of the, Counsel Orem?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question. You've been through the channels with conservation and so forth. I'm just curious, and I was going to yield to the Ward Six Counselor where this resides, your property resides, but just curious, the time of operation. I know you've done some outside operations. I can hear it across the lake where I live, which is fine, because I've only heard it to a certain time. Is there a time limit that this will be open for entertainment or to be open for your general patrons?
So, so we, when we did the deck, we did that till 11:00. We don't usually have it open till 11:00. The weather's not conducive most of the time till 11:00. It's not, it's, there isn't a demand, so we were considering 10:00 o'clock for the outside gazebo.
Okay, and I have not received any complaints, but again, I'm not the Ward Counselor, I'm at large, so I represent the entire city, but I'll yield to the Ward Counselor, too, to make sure everything's okay down there, but thank you. It's a beautiful property. You are correct. I get to enjoy it once in a while, too, with the Rotary Club, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for fixing that place up. Thank you.
We did a lot of work to the inside, and now, now we'd like to expand on that.
Any other comments from the councilors? Comments from the councilors? Counselor Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is in Urban Affairs, so you will be meeting with us, but I guess I have a couple of questions. It's my understanding you don't have an attorney, that one or the other of you wrote the language of the amendment to the special permit.
Yes, that's correct.
So I guess my concerns are, the special permit was really written for a deck. Now you're including a whole new structure, a fire pit, and a bocce court. So it's a pretty different amendment, or it's a pretty different structure than the original that was simply to have a deck attached to the building. So if you're comfortable coming before us without an attorney, I guess we'll move forward on this, but to answer the questions I think that was just asked, the original permit does specify hours, and I think the language of the amendment says that you would keep those, but this is specific to the deck, so I think there will have to be some clarification, maybe from our legal counsel, if we need to add in whole new sections specific to the outdoor structure. And I know it's unfortunate, you did go through conservation, you went through site plan, we have the site plan here, there were changes made to your original design of the site plan, you've also gone to the license board, and you have a liquor license, for my understanding, to serve alcohol on the new structure, but also to take that alcohol to the fire pit and the bocce court. So we can discuss all of that as we get to Urban Affairs. Thank you.
Any other comments from the councilors? Counselor Navin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, just because the at-large Counselor did defer to me, I just will highlight that I have not heard any concerns from the residents of the Lake area regarding this. I have heard a few comments, though, about the improvements that are made, and people have appreciated them, so I will note that. I'm on Urban Affairs, and I look forward to getting into this a little bit further, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Navin. Anyone else? Any other councilors? Any other comments from the councilors? Any comments from the councilors? Comments from the councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs. Thank you, John, thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number five.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the proposed zoning map amendments for parcels of land located on Jefferson and a small portion of Lincoln Streets, identified as Map 56 Parcels 147, 48, 50, 51, 52, and 53. In addition to Map 56 Parcels 154, 55, 156, 57, 58. Order 2122-100, 8475B.
Again, this public hearing will be taken up in four stages with the public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then comments from the City Councilors. So we'll start with the public speaking in favor, starting with the proponent or applicant, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just need to recuse myself from this public hearing.
But the record reflected Counsel Dumas has abstained from participating.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, I just wanted to kind of clarify why we're doing this, why I sent this down a couple of months ago. When we were doing the Lincoln Street rezoning, it's almost like we forgot about this Jefferson Street area, because it, all abuts against the rail trail, and we want to make sure the Jefferson Street strip is conducive to any project that we would be moving forward with. Since the time that we started discussing it internally, obviously, we have a great project that's coming before you tonight, and part of that project needs to be rezoned into this new zone for the rail trail area. It doesn't affect the commercial automotive on Mechanic Street, it really runs along the rail trail, and then on the Jefferson Street area. So it's to make it conducive with the zoning that we all did on Lincoln Street with those two purposes in mind, not to, we have nothing up our sleeve, except we do have to do a piece of it for this development that's coming before you tonight, and to keep that area on Jefferson Street hopefully a lot more active with a lot more people. Part of this project is to do the parking lot across from the football field, so we're looking to really see some activity down there. So we're excited about it, but that's the purpose that I came down with, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Attorney Falk, please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian Falk from Myrick O'Connell, 100 Front Street in Worcester. I represent Alta Marlborough LLC, an affiliate of Wood Partners. As the mayor mentioned, Wood Partners has submitted an application for a mixed-use development at the corner of Lincoln Street and Mechanic Street. This zoning map amendment affects a small portion of our development site, and we fully support this amendment. Any redevelopment of this site would benefit from this amendment. It allows for land uses that fit well with the area and benefit the entire neighborhood. This project and other potential projects would face negative design restrictions without this amendment. We encourage the council to vote favorably on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Again, please come up and state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anthony Antico. I own 72 Jefferson Street, and I do not understand how this will affect me. It's a 35,000 square foot building, and I don't know what, what does this mean for my building in the future? Can somebody answer that?
You want to take a second?
I just want to, and we will verify it with our legal counsel tomorrow, but my understanding is any operation that's going on down there today would be allowed in the future for the, to continue the same operation. So it wouldn't be taking what you're currently doing down there away from you at all.
So if somebody, if a tenant, if a tenant moves out, I can continue to rent as I have been in the past? Nothing will change?
Continue using it for the purpose you're using it for today, and then it would give you the additional availability for the MB zone as we did on Lincoln Street. But I'll be glad to get back to you tomorrow on exactly what...
Sure, I, so, so I understand Jefferson Street was zoned automotive and...
Commercial automotive.
Commercial automotive.
Yep.
So will that be going away for my building?
Yes, you wouldn't be able to do a car lot, an auto body shop, those types of use. The uses that are over in the Mechanic Street area?
Yes.
Those uses would not be allowed in the new zone. Only the current uses that you have today and any new uses.
So what could I use, what will I have to go get a special permit for? For instance, we have people, we have sports.
Yep.
We have a church on the second floor. Boston Scientific rents for their employees to work out.
Yep.
We have karate, you know, it's, some of it is very family.
Yep.
Most of it is sports or some kind of activity. Will that ever be taken away?
What I, again, what I'd like to do is reach out to both you and Mr. Jordan tomorrow, have our legal counsel just give me some direction on that, because I don't want to state something that isn't correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So you all set, Anthony? You're good? All right, any other members, any other questions from the public? Questions from the public? Any other members of the public have any questions? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Oh, sure, absolutely.
Opposition, I had a question about the...
Can I have your name, sir?
My name's Robert Jordan. I own the building at Forte Hudson Street.
Thank you, Robert.
Which is right across the street from Jefferson Street.
Okay, continue, Robert.
The parking lot, there's a parking lot right next to my building, and I hadn't heard of this before, but I may have mentioned the plans for the parking lot. Is there, do we have access to those plans?
No, not that parking lot, the other, the gravel parking lot that abuts the rail trail itself, not the one that abuts your property. So I know the city owns the parking lot and then a lot behind you, but there's no plans to do anything with those. The parking lot we're talking about is the one that abuts the rail trail directly across from the field.
Thank you.
Does that help clear, Robert? Okay. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the City Councilors? Questions from the City Councilors? Counselor Landers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question, probably from the mayor. Mr. Jordan did speak, and I happened to be up there the other day picking up some printed material, and so we discussed this somewhat. I can see the city mayor owned their parking lot and the lot before, but your plan is to change the zoning on Mr. Jordan's building?
It was, it was, if you look at the map, the natural, and I'm sure they'll be taking it up in Urban Affairs, but the natural line really is the rail trail, and we did anything on the east side of the rail trail? Come on, all you guys, the geography members, but...
North side of Hudson Street.
So it was everything over on that side that we ended up coming down with the request to rezone? The important part is obviously the rail trail for the project.
Okay, so, you know, as I say, I did have some discussion with Mr. Jordan on that, and I happen to be in, on the Urban Committee, so we'll probably discuss that part of it also. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Landers. Any other members of the council have questions? Counselor Robey.
Well, maybe not questions, but I just want to clarify for people, or remind people, this was originally on our agenda back, and it was not referred, it was not advertised, it was not, it was only referred to the committee. The intention that I had behind doing that was because this order was sent down by the mayor, not by a person who owned a property, and not by a city counselor, and I figured it was worth having a discussion to see if we agreed with the mayor's recommendation before it was put forward. So that didn't happen. We did ask to push this forward because of the need to rezone, and I will read from the application from Myrick O'Connell, a small portion of the commercial automotive land within the development. So if you see on the map, and if you've looked at the information that was given for the development, it really is just a very tiny piece of the spur on the rail trail. And the rail trail, if you look at the GIS map, starting at Sasseville Way, it's zoned LI. If you continue south on the rail trail, it becomes A3, and then it becomes commercial automotive around this. And I guess I will remind councilors, when we did the neighborhood business rezoning, we really focused on Lincoln Street from Broad all the way down to Mechanic, knowing that this parcel was a piece of it, but we very limited the number of zoning changes that we made on parcels on Mechanic Street. And we took a few of them, but we left most of them like they were currently zoned. We had another project before us once where there was an attempt to use the rail trail to do some rezoning. They were parcels that were dispersed along the rail trail, and we denied that zoning change. So I guess when we're in committee, I will certainly take into consideration the impact of the zoning changes and include, for those of you that were not at the planning board, the A&R that's on the planning board's table for one of the pieces of property, that if we change it from commercial automotive, they won't be able to do what they want to do, and we'll have the discussion around all of that. So I look forward to taking this up in committee. The planning board, I believe, has their public hearing next.
April 20th.
On the next meeting date, and once that happens, we can get going on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Robey. Any other questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Seeing none, I close that part of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and it is in Urban Affairs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agenda item number six.
Presentation by Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding a draft Department of Housing Community Development DHCD guidelines for MBTA communities relative to Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020 multi-family zoning requirements, Order Number 22-100, 8552.
Mr. Solicitor, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. So this is the initial presentation that's required by the state economic development bill back in 2020, one second, thanks, that one piece of requires multifamily zoning in MBTA communities, which we are one of them. It's going to play on over probably the better part of a two-year process here, depending on the timeframes that end up being finalized. This is the initial kickoff. It's going to be a brief presentation between myself and Mark Rassacott from MAPC, and he'll walk through some slides on what this law entails and what the draft guidelines that you have and the correspondence I sent down at the last meeting entail. And a couple of things I'll say briefly about that is, one of them is that these are only draft guidelines, they're likely to change, we may see those changes within the next month or so. So while we won't have all the answers tonight, we hope to address as many questions as possible. So while we won't have all the answers tonight, we hope to address as many questions as possible with the caveat that the actual answers may depend on what the final guidelines look like. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mark.
I didn't bring a copy of it, so I'm going to have to turn to look at this. So, ah, this is great. Okay. Thank you, Steve. So this is all about the MBTA community's new legislation that passed, passed about a year ago. This way. You know, you get used to doing things on Zoom, and you have to do it in person again, and it's, it's a whole new world. Okay. So this was passed as part of the Acts of 2020, signed into law January 21. All MBTA communities must adopt a zoning district for multifamily that is of reasonable size, quote unquote, with a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. That's gross density, very important distinction, and where the multifamily is permitted by right. That's the legislation. The devil's in the details, as always. The key parts of the draft guidance are that reasonable size is proposed to be 50 acres total. Again, the gross density of 15 units per acre. And gross density is measured, including everything within the zoning boundary. So for instance, most zoning is net zoning, where you have 15 units per developable acre or something like that, two units per developable acre. This is 15 units per acre. So if you have a 75-acre district, actually, let's say 50, just because that's what they want you to use. If you have a 50-acre district, and half of that is parks and roads and the city hall, that is basically zero space, and you need to increase the density on the other half so that you come out with a gross density overall in the entire district of 15 units per acre. So that's a complexity that was built into the legislation that DHCD has no control over, and it's one of the things we have to deal with. So you don't have a train station. You are what's called an adjacent community. If you look at this map, you can see the city of Marlboro is in the lightest shade of green on this map. That's a very important piece of information because it impacts the total number of units that you have to zone for. Key definitions in the draft guidance, what is multifamily? Everybody's got a different opinion on that, but in the legislation, or excuse me, in the draft guidance, it's three-plus units within a structure or more than, two or more dwellings, buildings on a lot with, with more than one residential unit in each. So if you had duplexes, multiple duplexes on a parcel, then that would count as multifamily. The minimum unit capacity, how many units do you have to zone for in order to meet this new state law? The minimum floor is 750 units. That's 15 gross units per acre over a 50-acre parcel. However, there's a second element to the calculation as well, and it's that the minimum total number of units is a percentage of the total existing dwelling units within the city or town. Remember, I said it was important to know that Marlboro is what's called an adjacent community. You have to have 10% of your total number of units zoned for within this district. You've got roughly 17,500 residential units in the city, which means that you have to have about 1,750 total potential units within your zoning district. Doesn't mean they actually have to get built, but you have to zone for it. So compliance, this is a state mandate. Failure to comply with the mandate within the, within the time period that they have set forth will result in eligibility for various state grants. Housing Choice, MassWorks, which I know you guys use a lot, and Local Capital Projects Fund grants. In addition, DHCD can add other grant programs to the list because it's a mandate. So answers to some questions. These are the questions that we've been hearing mostly about. So do existing units count? Well, yes and no. It's not really about the units. It's about the zoning. You have to have an area zoned for this number of units. The reason I say maybe yes is because if you have an area that already has multifamily, maybe you approved it as part of special permits in the past. If you change the zoning in that area, you're essentially, you know, not going to see many more units in that area, but you're zoning for the minimum required number of units. Where to locate the districts? In a, in a community that has a train station, it's very easy. You've got to be 50 acres within a half mile of the train station. In a, in an adjacent community like Marlboro, the logical place is downtown, a commercial area that has vibrancy, it's a walkable area for folks. So, I mean, you've already done this, you know, when you've rezoned the downtown a number of years ago. I just don't know, I haven't done the calculations to see if it's big enough, to see if it's going to have the number of units. Part of the reason is that, as has been stated, we don't have the final guidelines yet, so there's not much of a point in doing that. Let's see. Okay. What local control? It's basically the same as when you do a buy right district now, like when you did the buy right district for the downtown. You've given up the special permit control, but you still retain site plan. And you can have design guidelines, you can have that kind of thing, but you have given up the special permit. So then the question of how do you calculate the total number of units? Again, it's a little tricky. It's based upon the developable land within the district. So if you are, again, if you've got a 50-acre parcel or 50 acres of multiple parcels within a, within a zoning district, if 10 acres of that is water or wetlands, you can't say you've zoned for 15 units an acre on those properties. It has to be ultimately able to generate the total number of units that you're saying that it will. So wetlands don't count. What do we know about final guidance? Who's got a crystal ball? You know, everybody I talked to says certain things can't change. It's going to be 15 units an acre. There will be zoning parameters around where these can be located. They're going to be in smart growth locations or in the adjacent areas around train stations, and it has to be by right. Those things we know. The rest of it, we don't really know all the details on yet, but we expect that after March 31st, which it has already passed March 31st, the state should be coming out with, with final regulations. Our guess is that it'll be sometime this summer. Okay. I didn't know, but I'm glad to know now that you received MAPC's seven-page letter describing our comments on the regulations. Just want to touch on a couple of them. First of all, the regulations have no requirement at all for affordable housing. We think that's a very important thing. Would like to promote affordable housing. As part of that recommendation, we are saying that communities that include affordable housing within their zoning should get some credit for that. Maybe they don't have to produce as many units because we think that making these a sort of mixed income area would be very important. We'd like to make sure that the, the areas to the maximum extent possible do take advantage of existing transit. Regarding minimum unit capacity, we're trying to propose to the state, again, that this be stretched out over a little bit of time to give municipalities the ability to plan where they want all of this residential development to occur. You'll see in a minute that the timeline is actually quite short. It's easier for a city because you guys meet on a regular basis, but for a town where they meet twice a year to change legislation, this is a really tough, tough schedule. We're also asking the state to come up with easy-to-follow guidance because I could tell you how I would calculate 50-acre density of 15 units an acre, but you get, you know, as the saying goes, if you get three lawyers in a room, you get four opinions. Well, same thing with planners. You know, you get four of us together, and we'll all have a different idea slightly about how you should calculate this. So we want to make sure that the state provides clear guidance because some communities have already started to rezone based on a 15-unit-per-acre density, and those are not going to qualify, probably, because the districts do include parks and roads. And so they're, they're probably going to have to change their zoning to go up to about a 17-unit-per-acre density in order to account for that. But as soon as we can get the regulations, then we will know how to do the calculations. So next steps, you've already taken the next step. By May 2nd, you would have had to have had this meeting. Secondly, you have to file the MBTA community information form by May 2nd. It's a one-page form that just basically said you've had the hearing, you've started the discussions. Then you probably want to look at some state grants. The state grants this year, the EOHED Community One Stop, the Mass Housing Partnership, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, all of them are focusing their grants this year to try to help communities meet these guidelines. MAPC also has our technical assistance program. Would encourage you to talk to Karina Milchman, who I will, I'll have her contact up at the end of this program. She is our chief of housing and neighborhood development. She's the real housing expert who's following all the details on this, and she's available for questions at any time. Just couldn't be here tonight. So the timeline, as I said, relatively short in terms of zoning. So we anticipate getting the final guidance tonight. By the end of this year, every MBTA community has to have a plan for how they're going to meet, how they're going to meet these regulations. And so you'll file the action plan, or you'll request a certification from DHCD that, hey, we've already made it. We already zoned for the 1,700 units here in Marlboro. By July of next year, DHCD will determine whether or not your plan or your request for compliance certification is, is acceptable to them. And then by December of 2024, as an adjacent community, you will have had to zone for these number of units. I think that's a fairly short timeframe. You know, you've got to do some planning, you've got to do some real good thinking about how to move forward. I think the very first thing you want to do is you're going to want to test to see if you have any districts that already meet this. Are they big enough? What's the unit capacity? Do you have any areas that are special permit that you might want to consider changing to buy right? Because that might be an easy one. This is basically just saying, contact MAPC. We'll try to put you in touch with the right people. We can help you with the grant proposals. We also, as I said, do have district local technical assistance funds. You have this list of resources, which I won't go into at the moment, and you have Karina's contact information. And that's it.
Thank you, Mark. If you don't mind, a couple of questions. I'm sure there are some. Questions from the councilors. Counselor Orm.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, if you could, I'm very curious about the MBTA communities that are adjacent to the MBTA, such as Marlboro and all these others, and like green. Have you heard comments that since we don't have direct access, why are we, is there any difference? Are we being treated a little differently because we don't have direct access to this commuter rail?
You're included because it, the law includes all 175 MBTA communities. Because you are an adjacent community, you actually are being required to produce less units than any of the others. You only, you have a 10% minimum. You, as you can see from the slide, some have a 25% of their total housing stock that would be, that they would need to zone for.
And you explain that very well, that we're about 1,750 units that we would be required to zone for. But again, the question is, the access to these commuter rails are not direct. You have to get in a car. Have you heard anything or requests from these other communities that MBTA is going to stop providing service to the centers of these other non-adjacent, the adjacent towns, such as you could pick up a bus in Marlboro at different stops and get to the Southborough-Ashland rail, you know? Those are the things that they want, I know it's already law, but they're concerned that we don't have really direct access. And yeah, 10%, but 750 for some towns, we're 1,750. Where do you draw the line? And I didn't know if you have heard from other communities with the same concerns.
That's a perfect question for Karina because she's been fielding the calls. This is actually the first of the presentations that MAPC has made, so I haven't actually heard from other communities on that, but I suspect that other communities have the same questions.
Yeah, I know I speak on my own behalf here, but I'm sure maybe my fellows feel the same way. It's, you know, we're trying to get people to train stations, and the schedules are the best we can have right now, but again, I'm wondering if any word has come out from the state that they're planning to put in bus stops with MBTA buses coming into these adjacent communities? That's my question.
Yeah. I do know that this, that the MBTA is relooking at their bus network. I don't know that they're planning on extending it out this way. It's been a while since I've been in Marlboro. Do you still have the lift that connects from the downtown to Framingham?
Yes. The schedule isn't 100% of what would be great if you had a bus stop on a regular hourly basis.
Yeah.
But again, we do have it.
Okay.
But it's not used that often. And again, I'm wondering if the other adjacent communities are seeing the same input? You know, how are people getting to the train stations? What's the use and so forth? So I'd be curious to hear what the adjacent communities are doing. So if you could give us.
I'll pass it on to Karina.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Counselor Orm. Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just got a couple of questions, and thank you for the presentation. Very insightful. So 50-acre zoning for this, does it have to be one lot, or can we break it up and have?
You can break it up. There's a, within communities where there is a train station, 25 acres must be within a half mile of the train station, and then other areas nearby could also be included. That's part of, I think, what the state is going to have to wrestle with because there are some areas, for instance, the station between Hopkinton and Southborough is, it's all wetland around it. So, you know, they, they're going to have to figure out a workaround there. In a community that has more than one station, they have. In a community that has more than one station, they have been told that they could split it up between the stations. So it does not have to be entirely contiguous, 50 acres. You could have 30 acres here, and then nearby, you could probably do the other 20.
Okay. In the case of Marlborough, too?
I'm, I'm-
You're assuming so?
I am assuming that, but I haven't seen the final regulations.
That's fine.
So, yes, if, I think, for instance, the area that you're talking about on Jefferson and up on Lincoln Street later, I know that's going to be a special permit, once you approve it. You could always rezone it as by right and, you know, get credit for the units up there.
Okay. Okay, so kind of cherry pick or something like that? Kind of cherry pick and-
Well, I think that they may be a minimum size ultimately. They're not going to want to, you know, small parcel here, small parcel there. They'd like reasonable areas.
They want median parcels because you're talking about a significant amount of housing. I mean, 1,700 units, it's like the success of Marlborough has led to this. If we weren't as developed, we wouldn't have such a big number to match up to. You know, so I think that's, that was the surprising part of this, but, you know, just trying to figure out how to, how to get there from here, so.
I think I would start by calculating what you have in the downtown because you have by right up to six stories in the downtown over, so five stories of residential over a layer of commercial. You have very, very small required open space within downtown. You can have off-site parking, including in the parking garages. I think you're going to wind up with a lot of units within the downtown district. I just don't know how many. We would need to follow the state's guidance on the calculations.
Right. And make it more by right versus special permit. That's the big key. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Any other comments? Council Perelman?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to echo the comments. It was very helpful to have the presentation and to kind of visually see all of the recommendations and the outline from the guidance. A couple of questions, particularly, I know, in the MAPC kind of letter that we received, I really appreciate the equity pieces around the affordable housing and the mixed-income possibilities, as well as like reducing the parking. And was just wondering how likely any of the recommendations that we received that you all are pushing for might become part of the guidance? Are any particularly supported by other organizations?
We, many of the recommendations are supported by other organizations, but we still don't know what the final recommendations will look like. There are a lot of folks who would like to see an affordable component mixed in to these, and, you know, as part of that, as an incentive for doing that, perhaps lowering the total number of units that municipality would need to generate.
Right. I think I saw that in the guidance, and I thought that made a lot of sense. And then I was just wondering, based on the distance that's required, would there be any instances where, like, there's restrictions on where one community places it because another community is also placing it in a certain vicinity, or we get to decide as one municipality irrespective of the others surrounding us because we're near some other adjacent communities?
I have not seen anything about that, and I'm thinking of circumstances, for instance, the Hamilton-Wentham train station literally is in both towns at the, at the border, and that would make sense for it to be the location for both municipalities. Less so at the Hopkinton-Southborough because it's just not suitable land. So I haven't seen anything about requiring these to be as separate, or frankly, saying, where it makes sense, put them together because it's, build a more viable, vibrant neighborhood.
Okay. I was just curious that they wanted them to be closer together, like you said, to make it more of a transit-oriented development, or that it was really up to the municipality within the guidelines?
Well, the original intent of 50 acres within a half-mile of the train station was to try to build the area nearest to the station. And if, for instance, there was 30 acres north of the station that was suitable and 20 acres south of the station that was suitable, but they were both within that half-mile, then, then that would qualify and they'd be fairly close. So, yes, I think the intent is to try to make a walkable, viable neighborhood.
Okay. And then my final question, I know we didn't get to this in the presentation, but it did come up in a letter. Are there guidance around the parking? I know that's constantly been an issue with some of the development of how many spaces and the allocation, but are they restricting that in any way?
To my knowledge, there's nothing in the guidance about parking at this point in time. And I know MAPC was trying to make suggestions about lowering the amount of parking that would be required in areas where it was walkable and where it would make sense, so that it would be a more effective and efficient use of land, and you wouldn't have seas of parking between tall buildings.
Yeah, because it would be interesting if they correlated that to what type of community you were related to the parking. That would be, I think-
That would be a good idea.
A helpful addition, but I know I don't speak for the state, so I really appreciate the presentation, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Perelman. Any other councilors? Any other councilors? Councilor Roby?
President, Mr. Rethske, it's nice to see you back in Marlborough again, and thank you very much for the presentation. I know MAPC was involved in having one that was open to the public, and there have been several other forums for getting information. I was the one who had sent out the letter that MAPC wrote along with the letter that was written by the Metro West Regional Collaborative. Another one that I did not send out, but I would urge you all to read the April edition of The Beacon and read MMA and the Mass Municipal Legal Association's letter. I think that one, to me, offers some negative comments, more than positive maybe, and some opinions on some of the issues that are within this. They, they make comments that would lead someone to believe that some of the regulations would be illegal because they're not part of the state law. So it'll be interesting to see the comments that they, the reaction to those comments. And I, who, I know everybody has to fill out that form, the MBTA Community Info Form. Would the assumption be in a city, it would be the mayor that would do it? And then-
You know, I haven't looked at who the required signatory is, but I would assume it would be the mayor.
Okay. And would we be able to ask for a copy of it? Just because there's some interesting criteria that they're asking, I just wondered what the opinion of the person who presents it, maybe that's a point we can make. And then I think, too, regarding the letter that the MMA wrote, to the point that Councilor Orme made on transportation, I think that they call it the elephant in the room. I would add another elephant in the room for schools. Marlborough is already overcrowded, and we just built a new school, and I don't think we're going to get approved for another new school. And I know there are many districts and cities and towns across the Commonwealth that have that same issue. If we build all this housing, and I know we don't have to build it, but we have to put the zoning in, so as soon as the zoning is there, a developer's going to come and they're going to say, now I can build because I don't need eight votes. So probably the housing will get built, the kids will come, and who knows what happens next? So I know that's-
One thing that I would encourage you to consider would be whether or not a Chapter 40R district might be appropriate because that is by right. It's 20 units per acre as a minimum. So I think it would probably meet these guidelines. And if you have a Chapter 40R district, you are eligible for the Chapter 40S school payments if the taxes generated from the development do not pay the full school costs. So that might be worth looking into. It's not something I have examined closely, but it's something that is being discussed as an option.
All right. And I think that's a whole new piece of Mass General law that this city has not taken up. So if we want to go there, maybe we can look to you for some of that technical advice. Thank you.
I think your point, Councilor Roby, it's not getting the payments, it's having the place to put the children in the school, correct? I mean, that's, it's a, it's a space issue. Councilor Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to bring attention to, I think it's admirable, and I'm so glad that you included in your letter, in your comments, to include, to think about affordable housing because I'm, I'm still really concerned as we think about this, because I've seen this in other communities, particularly housing projects built along communities when there's MBTA lines, that it ends up being gentrified. Those are the premium places to be. So the concept was to create more housing opportunities throughout Massachusetts with access to public transportation so people can work where they, you know, where they, where they get to work where their jobs are and live someplace affordable. But the word affordable is just, it's just very frustrating. It's a state policy word, but doesn't actually address the housing that's needed. So I'm concerned about these units that are going to go in, they're going to have 2,500-plus rents, and they'll bring it down a little bit, and then it'll be called affordable, but still affordable for whom. And it's a conundrum, I think, we're going to have to be, we're going to have to really think about because this effort, again, was, I think the intention was creating more access to equitable housing, and it, I'm nervous that this is going to be a boom for high-end apartments and more, more resources for people that already have the most resources. So I'm interested to see how this develops.
Thank you, Council Wagner. Anyone else? So I would just mention to the councilors, so we know we've got the form that's got to be submitted. The solicitor will work through the mayor's office to get that down, and there won't be an issue, Councilor Roby, for the council to see that. I would probably recommend, once the final guidance is issued, we probably put an order in to have MAPC come before Urban Affairs and look at it at that point. A little premature at this point, but I think that would probably be the right approach. Any other comments or questions for Mark? Seeing none, Mark, Mr. Solicitor, thank you very much for the presentation and I'm sure-
Thank you for inviting me out.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from Councilors Ossing and Wagner regarding municipal aggregation, March 2022 update.
Councilor Wagner?
Thank you, Mr. President. We, the Municipal Aggregation Committee met, and the highlights I wanted to make sure folks knew about, there's information included in the packet, but really wanted to highlight the exciting parts, which include Marlborough residential electricity users participating in the municipal aggregation program saved over $829,000 in the fourth quarter of 2021, and the first quarter of 2022 savings to the residents is estimated to be over $1 million. The 2022 projected savings to the residents is estimated to be about $3 million, and the INSPIRE contract has saved Marlborough resident electricity, electricity users participating in the program over $3.8 million since its inception in November of 2019. Municipal aggregation program has saved all users over $8.5 million since the program inception of 2007, and municipal aggregation program continues to save Marlborough residents' money on their electric bills, which is particularly enjoyable right now as we see energy prices continue to increase. And so I would like to make a, to move to accept and place this information on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The letter is filed 11-0. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding gift acceptance in the amount of $350 from St. Mary's Credit Union awarded to the Council on Aging for the sponsorship of the McMurphy Man for the St. Patrick's Day event.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the gift, and thank you to St. Mary's Credit Union for being such a generous gift and a strong supporter of our wonderful city. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to approve the gift. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The gift is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number nine.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $500 from the Massachusetts Council on Aging awarded to the Council on Aging to be used for the Walk Mass Challenge.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The grant is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number 10.
Communication from the mayor regarding grant acceptance in the amount of $7,500 from the Massachusetts Cultural Council awarded to the Marlborough Downtown Village Cultural District to be used to offset costs for the annual food truck and arts festival run by the Marlborough Economic Development Corporation.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the grant, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the grant. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The grant is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number 11.
Communication from the mayor regarding transfer requests in the amount of $589,691, which moves funds from Economic Development to MEDC to fund the fiscal year '23 operations of the Marlborough Economic Development Corporation.
Council Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is referred to the Finance Committee, 11-0. Agenda item number 12.
Communication from the Department of Public Utilities regarding an investigation by the department regarding its potential policies that will enable the Commonwealth to reach its goal of net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050.
Council Dusset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This was a very important issue as far as addressing climate change, so I think it's important that we understand that the public hearing, there's actually going to be two hearings about this. One is Tuesday, May 3rd at 7:00 p.m. The other one's Thursday, May 5th at 2:00 p.m. And any written response has to be done by May 6th. So I hope you folks have a chance to review the material, and if you can, attend the public hearings and see what they have to say. You know, the, the natural gas utility is the leader, one of the leading generators of carbon dioxide within the state, so what, how they're going to address that is a very good question. I'm planning to attend that, and I hope the rest of the councilors do. For now, except and place on file.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the DPU correspondence. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? The correspondence is filed 11-0. Agenda item number 13.
Communication from the Department of Public Utilities regarding petition of Massachusetts Electric and Antucket Electric doing business as National Grid for a waiver of the basic service procurement requirements for residential and small commercial customers for the winter of 2022 and 2023 basic service period.
Council Dumas?
Thank you. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the correspondence. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is filed 11-0. Agenda item 14.
Application for a special permit and site plan approval from Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless to install a new stealth wireless communication facility, including an 80-foot stealth pole with accessory ground equipment at 739 to 769 Donald J. Lynch Boulevard.
Council Landers?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Please refer to Public Service Committee and also set the date for a public hearing.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Service Committee will set a public hearing for May 9th and advertise. So again, go into public service, a public hearing, May 9th, and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is approved to refer to public service, advertise a public hearing for May 9th. 11-0. Agenda item 15.
Communication from Attorney Brian Fock on behalf of Alta Marlborough LLC regarding a proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 650, Section 39, the Neighborhood Business District.
Council Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hang on, Councilor, I apologize. Council Dumas?
My apologies, Councilor. I need to recuse myself from item number 15 and 16. Thank you.
Let the record reflect, Council Dumas is abstaining from participating. I apologize, Council Roby.
All right. We have to cover all our bases here. And first, I'm going to just remind you all, we had a similar request from a developer back in 2021 where they had stated the same kind of thing, that based upon the recommendations from MGL, that this would only require a simple majority. And we wrote to the Executive Office of Housing and Development. They sent back their letter stating that, yes, this was an eligible piece of property. So I did talk to the solicitor. He feels that the criteria for this particular mechanic Lincoln Street property is very similar to the other one where it was ruled that it was eligible, and so he is comfortable with us not bothering to send another letter and just knowing that this will be a simple majority. So with that said, I'm going to move to refer this to Urban Affairs, to set a public hearing for May 9th, and advertise the public hearing, and also to refer this to the Planning Board.
Motion made and seconded to refer to Urban Affairs, the Planning Board, advertise a public hearing for May 9th. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is going to Urban Affairs, the Planning Board, a public hearing for May 9th, and to advertise, 10-0-1. Correct? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Agenda item 16.
Application for a special permit from Attorney Brian Fock on behalf of Alta Marlborough LLC to build a mixed-use development, excuse me, mixed-use project in the Neighborhood Business District consisting of 10,074 square feet of ground-floor retail and commercial space, 276 dwelling units, in addition to an onsite parking garage with 448 spaces to be located at the corner of Lincoln and Mechanic Streets.
Councilor Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna move to refer this to Urban Affairs and set a public hearing for May 9th.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee, set a public hearing for May 9th and to advertise. Any discussion on the motion? And I would like to reflect that Councilor Dumas will be abstaining from this one as well. Any discussion on the motion? Are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved to go to Urban Affairs, set a public hearing for May 9th and to advertise. Ten in favor, one abstaining. Agenda item 17.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Mr. President.
Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file all the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11-0 to file the minutes. Agenda item 18.
Claims.
Mr. President.
Council Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to send the claims to the Legal Department.
Motion made and seconded to refer the claims to the Legal Department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, they're going to the Legal Department, 11-0. Reports of committees. Who'd like to go first? Councilor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Personnel Committee met on April 5th at 5:00 p.m. We had one, two items on the end, on the agenda. All members were present, and the order number 22-18510A, so reappointment, reappearance of John Usiness to the Disabilities Commission for a term of three years. It was motion by Council Dusset, seconded by the Chair, and voted 3 to 0. And then the last item is order number 22-18510B, so reappearance of Wayne Stanley, also the Disabilities Commission for a three-year term. That was motion by Councilor Navin, seconded by the Chair, and that was voted 3 to 0. We adjourned at 5:06. I do have one item on the, that we need to, if you don't mind, ask for suspension, so I could, if I could have a vote on that. And that suspension is to remove item number 22-18538 out of the Personnel Committee and to have it on the agenda for the next full City Council meeting, and that's the reappearance of Catherine Usiness to the Commission of Disabilities as well. And the reason why we're doing that is because, due to timing, the next, the reason why we had the Personnel Committee was after the Disabilities Commission. It was on a Tuesday. The next meeting is not till the beginning of May, and then if we have her come in during May, then that was pushed out till June. I won't be here for the first two weeks of May either, so that prolongs everything. So if we could, just button this up and re, actually appoint her during the next full council. It may save everyone the hassle, and that way she could just go to the meetings and actually vote on it when we confirm her.
So there's a motion to, to suspend the rules. All those in favor suspending the rules? Suspension is approved, 11-0. Your motion, Councilor Dumas?
Thank you. I would like to motion order number 22-18538 to be removed from the Personnel Committee and then put on the agenda for the full City Council meeting, which would be on April 25th.
Motion made and seconded to remove from the Personnel Committee the appointment of Ms. Usiness to the Disabilities Commission and have on the agenda for the April 25th meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I've known John since I was part of the Disabilities Commission when I first came on the council. But Kathy I met over the last couple of months. She married John, and they've, she's moved into town. She was very active in her original community of Quincy, and she wants to do the same and provide her time and talent to Marlborough. I think it's a great opportunity, and I wish them both a long and happy life. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Dusset. Any other comments or questions? Councilor Robey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Although I certainly understand the rationale for doing this, at a committee meeting, there would be the opportunity to ask questions of a new applicant, which Catherine Usiness is technically a new member to this committee. So would we be able to have those kinds of questions asked at a full council meeting? I mean, I'm not sure anybody needs to. I've never met the woman. I did, I was not able to come to the last committee meeting, but I did watch it. I do know both of the current people that are up for reappearance, but it's, it's a little different for somebody that's brand-new. And I know I did read the packet. It does provide some information, but I just wanna throw it out there that there isn't that opportunity to have the one-on-one conversation that I think would typically happen. So if everybody's okay with that, that's fine with me, too.
Thank you, Councilor Robey. Anyone else? On the motion to remove from the Personnel Committee and place on our April 25th agenda, all those in favor? Opposed, it is approved to put on the April 25th agenda and remove from Personnel, 11-0. Additional reports? Councilor Landers.
Oh, very good. Thank you, Mr. President. Public Service Committee meeting was held on March 30th. We took up four items. The first item was order number 221008541, petition from Mass, Massachusetts Electric to replace the direct burial cables in the Woodland Estate. And this is rather a big project. We're talking over a mile of cable and the conduit, the boxes. So we were fortunate that we had the city engineer there, which we, always gives us great guidance and also always tells us what we should be looking for as far as conditions. So on a motion by Councilor Irish, it was seconded by the Chair, the committee voted to recommend the approval of the petition as requested to the conditions submitted by the city engineer. So I will, Mr. President, pointing this out, but I also would like to have a suspension of the rules, that we can vote on this tonight.
Okay. Do you want to do that now?
I think we should.
Motion has been asked to suspend the rules for order number 8514. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed, suspension is approved, 11-0. Councilor Landers.
Okay, so my, my motion is to approve this petition that, tonight, and gives the opportunity for National, Mass Electric to get working on this project.
Motion made and seconded to approve order 8514, which, I mean, 8541, to allow Mass Electric to start the work up on Woodland Estates. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, it is approved, 11-0, to let National Grid go ahead on order 8541. Councilor Landers.
Okay, again, thank you, Mr. President. The second item we brought up was order number 22108514, an application renewal of a taxi license from Global Llamazin and Tour Service, 17E Court. The chief, Police Chief, submitted no objections after reviewing the query, and that's always something we look for. So on a motion by Councilor Irish and seconded by the Chair, the committee recommended the approval of the renewed license for Global Llamazin and Tour Service 3-0. This next order we took up was order number 22108515, the application for a taxi license from the ROA Health Service System, and that's down in Bolstering Way 43. And likewise, the chief submitted no objection after reviewing the query. So on a motion by Councilor Irish, seconded by the Chair, the committee recommended the approval of the new license, 3-0. And the next item we brought up was the order number 22108537A, communications from Mayor Vigent with the proposed amendments to the Code of the City of Marlborough's Chapter 510, sewer use of public sewers. Members of the City Council discussed a proposed change, request by the mayor to assist the homeowners navigating the requirements for public sewer ordinance. On a motion by Councilor Irish, seconded by the Chair, the committee recommended the approval of the mayor's proposed amendment as submitted. The, Mr. President, the Betterment Order remains in committee, and that's something that we will bring up at a, for the meeting, but I, but I will report this out at the next meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Landers.
Thank you.
Any other reports of committees? Any other reports of committees? No other reports of committees? We'll move on to agenda item 19. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion, Public Service Announcement that the Finance Committee will be meeting on April 14th, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Irish. So Finance will be meeting April 14th at 6:30. Anybody else? We're good. Then agenda item number 19.
Order number 22-108513, secession planning project information submitted by Mayor Vigent. Recommendation of the Operations and Oversight Committee is to refer it back to the mayor.
Councilor Oram.
Number 19.
Number 19.
Yes. Let me get to that.
Move the recommendation to committee?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I was trying to do two things at once, and my fault. Yes, move the recommendation to committee. Thank you.
That's okay. Motion made and seconded, move the recommendation to the committee. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Committee's recommendation is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number 20.
Order number 22-108511, the reappearance of George Laventra to the Planning Board for a five-year term to expire on February 1st, 2027. Recommendation of the Personnel Committee is to approve.
Councilor Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the appointment. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the appointment is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number 21.
Order number 22-108526, proposed order for the establishment of the West Side Fire Station stabilization account. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Councilor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the recommendation of the committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed, the committee's recommendation is approved, 11-0. Agenda item number 22.
Order number 21-108402A1, proposed order to authorize the purchase of 100 lock drive for the purpose of building a new fire station. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the order as amended.
Councilor Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the committee's recommendation as amended. Any discussion on the motion? Councilor Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to make sure for clarification purposes that the paper that was left in our mailbox, the text and read is being included as part of the amendment?
I will be stepping down to speak to that momentarily, Councilor.
That's fine. I'm waiting for you at that point. Okay.
Councilor Wagner.
Clarification question. So I'm really concerned about how this has transpired, and now I do support, I support this, but what's, what I want to understand what's before us is we would only be able to vote in favor of the, of authorizing the land by, if it includes the amendment, are we gonna vote for the amendment up and down?
Amendment's gotta be up. No one's brought up an amendment yet, but that's gotta be voted up and down.
Okay.
The amendment that the Finance Committee approved was changing the word stabilization to undesignate.
Correct.
That is correct, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Robey, could I ask you to come take the chair, please?
Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Madam President.
Councilor Osing.
Thank you, Madam President. So councilors, you do have before you some, a draft amendment I'd like to make to the order. So the amendment reads, motion to further subject the entirety of the order of authorization to purchase 100 lock drive for the purpose of building a new fire station to the adoption by the City Council and approval by the mayor of a transfer in the amount of $1,422,500, which is the mitigation funds, into the West Side Fire Station. So I make that, a motion to amend, Madam President.
Is there discussion on the amendment?
It's gotta be seconded first, so.
I'm seconding it. Is there discussion? Councilor Dusset.
Thank, thank you very much, Madam President. So just so that I understand this, you know, basically, we're authorizing the mayor to do 5, 5.1 million dollars, more or less, to appropriate the property, purchase the property, but your stipulation is basically the 1.42, 1.442, $1,422,500, which were mitigation funds that we have collected prior to this event, prior to today, in support of the fire station. That's where that money came from, and it's already been identified as part of a variety of special permits and all that, right? So what we're really doing here is saying, okay, the mayor can do 5 million or so for the property, plus this money is being put aside for the actual construction, the 1.422. Is that the case through the?
Madam President, may?
Do you like to answer that?
Absolutely. So, so the intent, Council Dusset, is to, I don't know what the votes are for the fire station. I'm assuming, based on what I heard in Finance, everybody's okay with it. So this is just to make sure that when he goes out to purchase the fire station land, he transfers 1.4 million dollars to the stabilization account that the council had asked for in the order we just previously approved and in the special permit that the council approved in 2019. So just adding, adding that caveat on it that says, Mayor, go ahead and purchase the land if you can for 5 million bucks.
But if you do.
But we want you to do it, but if you do, you're gonna add the 1.4 million dollars that's sitting there right now in the 11 million dollar balance of the undesignated fund. So it's not like we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. The money is right there.
Right. But basically, what it, if you don't mind me continuing, what it does do is it puts a stipulation that if the mayor was thinking of using the money, the 1.42 million, that cannot be used to purchase the property, the rest has to come from free cash, and that money's being put aside for something else. And I'm fine with that, you know? But I just want to clarify it as far as process goes, how the money flows, where the conversation with the mayor, eh, we'll use some of that money to purchase the property, and the response from, from this is gonna be, no, no, no. You know, we're fine with you taking the money from free cash if you can get it that cheap. That's another story. But this money, the 1.422, has to go into the bucket before you actually pay for the property. And that's the timing as well, right? He doesn't have to put the money into that bucket until he's willing to basically put the money down to purchase the property. Is that the case?
So that is the request of the council if this amendment passes?
Sure.
Whether he follows that?
Is another story.
That is correct.
Absolutely. No, I just wanted to make sure I understood the process and steps that are involved in this, because it's, it is getting convoluted. And I understand the, the need and why we're doing this, but also wanted to clarify it for myself, as well as anyone who's actually staying up late enough to watch this tonight. So.
Good news is, it's on reruns.
This is true. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Councilor Dumas?
Thank you, Councilor Robey. Excuse me, Madam Chair, Madam President. I, this has been a lot. Meeting with the mayor, meeting with President Osing, and it's taking its toll. The only people that affect are the residents here of Marlborough, and I think what concerns me the most is that we're asking for a transfer 142250 for mitigation funds. $822,500 is actually being utilized to purchase the land for specifically the fire station. I don't feel comfortable supporting the amendment based upon the 1.4. I think the amendment should be 600,000, because that is the difference between the 822.5 and the 1.422.5. Now we're just splitting hairs. I don't want to see this to go back and forth, back and forth. I understand the mayor's point. President Osing, I understand your point. However, there has to be some type of compromise. I think that now, when you add the 1.4 plus the 8, it comes to 2-something, and I get that. But I don't think that the land will be used for anything else but the fire station. I think we have a very long road before the fire station comes. This is our first bat at the fire station to something real and concrete, and it's already causing headlines, numerous conversations, lack of sleep, and that's just for the 11 of us here. And my constituents in Ward 3 have been watching this closely as they should, and to sit here and bicker, and myself included, like children, over this is not only sad, but I want to trust and respect the mayor again, and I think that if we amend the amendment to you, President Osing, to 600, I think that's a good common ground for everyone here. I think we, as a council, need to give, and I think the mayor does as well. And I think that if we add this to $1.422.5 to this amendment, I think that the mayor will probably not do that and put a screeching halt to the fire station, and I personally can't afford that for my constituents, and I don't think Ward 4 either. And I'm not putting Ward 4 on the spot, but the other direct consequence with this fire station being built in this, it's been a very long road, and I'm tired of this already, to be honest with you. I think something needs to be done, so... And I think if we change this to 600, we're definitely sending a message to the mayor that needs to be sent, but also I think there's enough wiggle room where he would actually continue this process of a fire station, because the way that the passion, I will call it, that has been here in this council, I am nervous that passion will come over to something that we were going to regret, and I personally don't want to see that happen. So I don't think I can support the amendment as much as I want to, but to me, I've just went to Vegas, I did not gamble. This, to me, is the biggest gamble that we could all do, and I'm not about to do that, especially when my constituents need this fire station, and I don't know how the mayor's going to react to this after meeting with him today, and that's what concerns me. I'm not scared of the mayor, but the fire station is far greater than losing it over a $1, $1.4 transfer. Thank you.
I'll let anybody else... I want to respond to that. I'll wait.
I'll just add, I think I'm in the same... I appreciate what Councilor Dumas said. I'm struggling with this. I think we've gone down a path where we've lost sight of the main goal. I think the main goal, which is overdue, is this fire station, and I am so appreciative of the amount of time and energy that went into evaluating where this needs to be. This is still not a done deal. The lock drive location is the one that we're looking at based on the professionals who helped with that whole evaluation process, that this would be an ideal location. We still have a long way to go, and at this point, I'm not comfortable with adding any roadblocks. I think it loses sight of the main goal, that we need to just transfer the money, not... I wouldn't... I don't support the amendment at this point, just transfer the money, try to get this land, and then go from there. We'll have the accounts set up. We could talk about what funds to transfer in down the road, but I think time is of the essence, and adding any more layers now in between of moving funds, it's all about getting the funds to hopefully get this land. And that, again, puts the residents of Marlboro's safety first and foremost, and that's where I am right now.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Councilor Navin.
Thank you, Madam President. I was not intending to speak at this time, so bear with me if I stutter through this. I totally appreciate the point that Councilor Dumas made. I don't think anybody on this council is looking to put a halt to the fire station, though I don't want to speak for anyone. There is an incredible need out here, and Councilor Dumas is right. This back and forth has kind of put on full display for the residents to see the friction and the desire to do this, you know, by a group of strong-willed individuals, and I think that's fine. I actually think it's healthy. I've said to a few of you, I think it's good for the citizens to see that, you know, this meeting and the city government is not for show, and that there is a real discussion, and there are people's priorities. I don't think that what is being discussed here, I don't think it has to be an either-or, and that's where some of this starts to get frustrating, right? And I don't think that people who are watching this meeting understand what is being discussed and what is being argued over here. I want to echo what the President said. We're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. This is not a decision of can we buy this land? Can we authorize the mayor to buy this land? And can we take the money that the council has already required as part of a special permit? The money for both items is there. And so... And I just saw this amendment shortly before the meeting, so I may not have had time to digest it, but by us saying we authorize the mayor to go forward and purchase this land for, by the way, a sum of money that, at the Finance Committee meeting, was admitted by everyone that it is not going to sell for. So we are voting on something that is, you know, was publicly stated, that it is unlikely that it's going to sell for this. But by authorizing that, we are saying as a council, please, go ahead. We're not the ones who have said we won't go forward and advocate for the purchase of this land if something doesn't happen. We are simply saying there is enough money for both. We would like the money to be put aside to construct it, and yet, at the same time, Mr. Mayor, please, continue your strong advocacy for this fire station, for the public safety of the people in Ward 3 and Ward 4 and the fringe wards that will also be served, the fringes of other wards that will also be served by the station. So I am open to this amendment that the President filed. Quite frankly, I'm open to any amendment that's going to move us forward here, that's going to have some sort... You know, it doesn't have to be all one way or the other, and it doesn't look like it will be. The other thing I want to mention is, if it doesn't go for this much money, and we do change the amendment, and so that it's the, you know, it's the remainder of that funds, what happens when the land goes for? I don't want to, you know... I'm not the negotiator, and I don't want to pretend to be the one, especially in an open forum, but when it costs more money, then the $600,000, does that magically go away, and then now the stabilization fund is at zero? And that is the concern I have. While we are at the point where we have the funds to do both, I think it's wise that we at least try to move forward. I think it is important for this council to say, "We support this fire station, whether it is here or somewhere else, we support moving the ball forward to try and get something concrete done for the public safety." I don't like being put in the position where if we don't do it one specific way, the council is the one that is standing in the way. I don't think that is how anybody in this room feels, and I think that we need to be careful how we move forward, but I do not think that we should be the ones saying, "We have to do it this way," because it'll put the brakes on the conversation. There is no reason that we don't continue this conversation. We are not the ones that would be putting the brakes on it. So I will be supporting this amendment. Thank you, Madam President.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Councilor Brown?
Thank you, President Roby. I... My... I guess it's more of a question that I'd just like for some clarification would be, if this proposed motion were to pass and we were asking the mayor to transfer, to put in the transfer for the $1.422.5, if he were to not do that, where would that leave us? My concern, being the representation for Ward 4, is that we need a fire station in this very west end of the city. It's where I live, and, you know, I've spoken to many residents down on that end, and, you know, many people in those deep pockets, they feel unprotected. So, you know, I've been listening to a lot of conversations about the fire station, so my question just is, if for some reason this motion is passed and we are asking the mayor to transfer the $1,422,500, if he were not to do so, where does that put us in the process, and does that stall us even further?
I can answer, but I'm sure that Councilor Osing could also answer if he has some other points he wants to make.
Thank you, Madam President. So a couple things. So I believe I'm principled in here are three instances now with... We just voted Item 21 that says we want the West Side Fire Station account, all right? We voted in December to tell the mayor to fund the West Side Fire Station account. In 2019, this council, some of you may not have been on it, but we said we were going to direct the developer with mitigation funds where to put it. So now, we're willing to say, "Mayor, you get to do what you want, and you can get to snub everything the City Council wants to do. I will not compromise my principles." Not doing it. Because the precedent... Because what's going to happen? So if you think you don't... If he doesn't like this amendment, he's not going to go chase after the fire station? So what is it that we tell him to do that he actually goes and does? It is very important here. I'm standing on principles of what this council stands for, and if you're going to tell us we're going to make recommendations and allocate funds and order the mayor to do things, and he just gets to do what he wants to do, I'll ask you, why do we need to have a City Council? All right? We asked for the $1.4 million. The money's there. There's $11 million there. $5 million is potentially going to go to purchase land. $1.4 million is going to go to build the building. There's potentially another $1.4 million coming later this year when Phase 2 comes along. So where's that going to go? We had no say in that. We already said where we want it to go. So it's an important concept, and if you think the mayor's going to say that we approved the order, and now he's not going to do it because he has to send something that rightfully we asked for, not a good look, and it's not... It's on the mayor's office, not here. We've done everything we're supposed to do. So I understand what you want to compromise, feel disappointed that he was trying to strong-arm you guys to do that way, but that's not his call. That is this council's call. And so I encourage the councilors to support the amendment. I believe it's an important sign of unity for this council to say that we worked hard to get money, and we want it to go in a particular fund. There is money to go by, the land for the fire station. And if he doesn't want to do that, that is the mayor that doesn't... And he's going to take his bat and ball and go home because we said we want what we rightfully asked for? Again, I believe we are in the right position, and to compromise on that, I believe jeopardizes any influence we're going to have going forward on a whole host of issues, because you're basically saying, "The mayor's office gets to do what the mayor wants to do, and we can ask, but so what?" Just so... Think heavily. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilor Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I would be more apt to support the $1.4 if we had the West Side stabilization account already set up prior to this. We're using the 8 to already for the fire station, and I think it would have been an at least easier transfer if the account was already set up. Since it wasn't, the money's already there for the fire station, so why not allocate those funds for the land for the fire station now rather than transferring it just to transfer it back? I think that is why it's a little easier. It's more of a technical glitch than anything else, because the account wasn't already set up. Thank you.
Councilor Landers, did I see your hand?
Yeah, you did briefly, yep. I'm ready to move on this. I'm ready to support the amendment. As I mentioned a couple weeks ago, this should have been settled a couple weeks ago, quite honestly. So I think we have to do our job as a council, member of the council, and that's why I'm going to support the amendment. Let's move forward on this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Councilor Ducey.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So the stabilization account was approved tonight, so it will be there at any time after today or whatever, how many days it takes.
Point of information?
Councilor Osing.
Oh, absolutely.
He can veto the order.
True.
We can override it, but just don't...
Right.
Just because we ask for something doesn't mean it happens. I just want to make sure we're all on board.
Fair point, and thank you for that clarification. He may refuse it, which is another... Makes this even sound worse. But in any case, it's not like he's ready to put money on the barrel to buy this property tomorrow either. This is the negotiation of trying to get this property done, and as what Councilor Navin was talking about, you know, basically, the money, the cost, the $5,92,600, that's based upon what the property value is in our books, which is not what the market value is of the property, which is where the big debate is going on, is basically, what's the assessed value of this property? And if it's, you know, if it's below $5 million, then the gods have shined on us, you know? But most likely, it's significantly more than that, in which case, the mayor's going to have to come up to us again with a real number, and that real number will have to be approved, and we'll have to figure out how that money's going to. It may be part of a bond or something like that as well, based upon how much the total amount is and what's available in free cash. So I don't think that there's a time urgency here barring any rejection of Item Number 21, that the stabilization account will be present by the time we get to the point we're actually negotiating for a price on this property, because that's not going to happen for quite a few months, at least, because there's lots of negotiations that need to go on, and the $5 million proposal is just the opening salvo in a long negotiation between the property owner and the city. So having, you know, we have the time on our, you know, to do this. If anything, you know, the mayor doesn't have time, because I don't think this will get settled under his watch, but I'm hoping that at least he leaves a future path ahead for the future mayor, whoever that may be, to go forward on this. Thank you.
Councilor Wagner.
Thank you. So a couple of things. One, clarification, I would like to... Hopefully, somebody could answer, but my understanding, too, for clarification, that the $5,92,666 figure, that's the limit that the mayor can spend without going to eminent domain? So I believe that's where that number comes from, and it's not just simply... It's probably going to be more, but that's the number for this to go in, to go forward with, as far as how I understand it. And I think it's important to remember that $11 million plus in free cash is, again, as I understand, it's not just really $11 million sitting there for us. We saw the $2 million overage for snow and salt that we haven't transferred yet. We already did transfer the $1.5 million for equipment or something, if I'm not mistaken, and we try to keep a $3 million reserve, so we're talking about less than $4.5 million to cover the purchase of the land, which means this other money would be needed, and so that's where I feel like, at this point, let's just do it. And what's the... I feel like we're having this big battle about putting money that's going to be in for a moment that has to then immediately be taken out, that we're going to need to buy this land, and it does feel time pressure, that this conversation's happening and that we should have everything and every tool in the toolbox available to try to obtain this land. So clarify, if I've got the free cash numbers wrong, I would love to hear feedback on that.
Councilor Osing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Councilor Wagner is right on the purchase of the land. It's the last three years' assessed value added together times 25%. So that's how the $5 million. So if you go onto the GIS, you look at the assessed value card, add up the three values for the prior years, times 1.25, divide by 3, multiply by 1.25, you get 5-point-whatever million is on the transfer. As far as free cash, you are correct. We have an outstanding request for $1.4 million for capital projects will be taken up on Friday. We have $5 million for the land. My version, $1.4 million for the West Side Fire Station transfer. The $2 million is not going to be $2 million for the snow and ice, but it's going to be something in excess of $1 million, probably. That still leaves us over $2 million in free cash, and I will caution you, there is no guarantee you have free cash next year. A high likelihood, we will, but the quote "money" that's in there that the developer gave us that we want, that this council said they would like to place somewhere, is not guaranteed to be there next year when free cash is certified. So in my mind, time is of the essence for us to work on this one now. Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Sir, any further discussion? Councilor Perlman.
Thank you, Madam President, and I appreciate all of the comments from my fellow councilors. I was trying to take it all in, because I do feel pretty conflicted and disappointed that we are kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. I felt the displays that come in the meetings, you know, wasn't the kind of conduct we want to see between the two bodies, and so I think it's really important that we do stay together as a council, and I totally resonate with the concerns from the wards. I know I've heard the fire station concern. We know it's been existing for a really long time. We want to make sure it's done right, and my concern, too, is even if we give here, there's no guarantee that that money will be reserved for the fire station, and I want to make sure that it's in an account that we're all aware of, it's on the books, and we know where the money is. So I don't know if the alternative is that we're going to be allocating... If the mayor, you know, this amendment doesn't move forward, that the mayor has any guarantee that that money will go to the fire station, or, you know, I mean, there could be another moment where he says that he doesn't want to move forward, something might have changed in the plans, but that money won't have been reserved. And I think Councilor Osing made a good point around... And I think Counsel Austin made a good point around, you know, what could come next down the line. I wouldn't want to see, you know, us not be able to be in a good position and show that we do have a role to play in these negotiations about where the money goes. And I know I wasn't on the council at the time, but so many counselors worked really hard on that special permit, and we want to know that that's a continued process. Our counselors in the future, you know, all of the work and all of the committee meetings to go into it to secure those funds get to be used for the purposes that we know that so many residents here deserve. So I will be supporting the amendment this evening, and I am really hopeful that we can continue to work collaboratively and get this fire station done, and we know the residents really need it and deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If you would like to come back up here, I would like to make a few brief.
The motion's been made and seconded to amend the Order 8402A1 to authorize the purchase of lock drive. Any further discussion on the amendment? Counsel Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I know there has been a lot of conversation and some clarification of things, but I think maybe one of the confusing pieces is the undesignated. We have a stabilization undesignated that, off the top of my head, I don't even remember. You probably know exactly.
Sixteen million dollars.
Sixteen million. So we have that available to use for things. Then we have the undesignated free cash that happens and varies every year, and what's there, because it's money left over from a previous year's budget. So I think the numbers have been gone through. We know there's 11 million. We know there's a few other things that we'll have to cover. But there's sufficient money in there to cover both the money that the mayor needs to start negotiating, which probably won't be enough, as already pointed out, plus the money that we want. If this piece of property falls through, we still need to build the building somewhere. So we're building up our money that's going to sit there to be used to build the building. So I think, as has been pointed out, we worked really hard on the special permit. There's another one that I think I had predicted wasn't ever going to happen on Crowley Drive. They're moving forward. That's more money that we're going to have that's supposed to go to the fire station. It'll have to be a transfer. Will we trust that the mayor will transfer it? I don't know. But I think this sends a strong message to him. If he wants that fire station to go forward, then he needs to work with us as a council and do what we've asked him to do, and use the account we've just approved tonight, sign the paper, get the account officially set up, and then give us a transfer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Anyone else? On the motion to amend the Finance Committee's recommendation as outlined in the information that I provided to you. Further discussion? All those in favor, please stand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and the president makes eight. Eight in favor of the amendment, the amendment is approved. Thank you very much. On the motion to approve the Finance Committee's recommendation as amended, so there's two amendments. One's the.
To amend.
Yeah, there's amendment to do the stabilization, the undesignated, and the amendment that we just approved. Counsel Roby? Oh. So on the motion to approve the amended Finance Committee recommendation, all those, so this is to authorize the mayor to purchase a fire station. All those in favor, please stand. Get easy. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, so nine in favor, two opposed. It is approved. Hang on, just let me catch up. Counsel Dumas?
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, Mr. Counsel Dumas.
Did we do both, yes?
No, hang on. No, 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 we got one more to go. If you liked the last one. Agenda item number 23.
Order number 21-108402B2. Proposed amended transfer requested in the amount of 5 million ninety-two thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents relative to the acquisition of 100 lock drive for a new fire station, clarifying the funding source. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve the amended transfer.
Counsel Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve, please.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the transfer. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dumas, Dussat?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. There's also wording changes on this one, as well as this also going to get the same changes?
You're faster than I am to get down to the.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
If I could ask Counsel Roby to take the podium, please.
So order number 21-108402B2 has been moved and seconded. Is there discussion? Counsel Austin?
Thank you, Madam President. So similar to the last one, the following is what I would like to make, a motion to amend the Finance Committee recommendation, which is to subject the transfer to purchase 100 lock drive to the adoption by the city council and approval by the mayor of the transfer in the amount of 1 million 422,500 dollars, which are the mitigation funds into the West Side Fire Station stabilization account. That's my motion. You'll need a second.
There's a motion that's been made. I'm going to second it. Is there discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none. All those in favor of the amendment, I'll do the stand again, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I count as eight, and three against. And then all those in favor of the motion as amended, please stand. Nine, so that carries. And the transfer is approved. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? And we are adjourned at 9:57.